Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Please have the roll call, Mrs. Ryska.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, council, we need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. First, a housekeeping item on my report. The city offices will be closed for business on Friday, December 14th, due to an in-service training day. And the offices that will be closed include City Hall, Public Library, the Parks and Recreation Center, the Senior Center, and also our Nature Center. The closure will not affect any refuse collection days and there'll be no delays there, again, that's December 14th. And also, a note of good news, the University of Michigan's Dearborns Eye Labs East Cities is honoring Sterling Heights as a five-star community. Sterling Heights has been recognized for cutting-edge economic development programs, which in the city's case involves the Velocity Collaboration Center, the Michigan Cyber Range located in our city, the Michigan Defense Center, also in Sterling Heights, the Macomb OU Incubator, again in our city, and soon to be the Robotics Collaboration Center, which will be located in Sterling Heights as well. Researchers focused on five-year changes in property values and community assets, which can demonstrate growth, investment, and cost to doing business in the city. This five-star distinction, again, is a reflection of the pro-business environment the city has cultivated over many years, which has created thousands of jobs, strengthened the local economy, and has kept our property taxes low for residents. And I wanted to recognize our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who's in the audience this evening, for his good work in implementing best practices in the areas of economic development, and in large part is responsible for this distinction. So, good news, and we're pleased to be rated as a five-star community. And also, many of you know that we had Sterling Christmas this past weekend on Saturday, and I wanted to take just a minute to show you some of the pictures of the new amenities, including, most excitingly, the new ice rink, and you can see here the city council is dedicating the ice rink Saturday evening. While it was rainy, it was perfect for ice skating, there was no problem with the ice whatsoever. We had a very good turnout, this happens to be the mayor and his daughter Clara, and we had many others that came out to enjoy the evening for ice skating. And as many of you know, the ice rink is now officially open, and you can use it any day, you can see our website for more details. Also, the normal festivities with Sterling Christmas, including caroling, the new amphitheater was the stage this year. And despite the rain, we had a good crowd. And of course, the petting zoo, always popular, was once again this year. And the Upton House again was showcased as a great asset in our community. And so, it was a great event, and we look forward to next year. And I also wanted to just close on this note, some of you have heard through the news reports that the Sterling Relief Drain will be improved. You can see before you on the screen is an image of some of the new improvements, and I'll highlight them. So, in essence, the County Public Works Office is improving a few miles of drain in our city under a program that's called daylighting. They received about $1.8 million to do this. Daylighting now is a common practice throughout the country where drain water is, instead of draining through pipes out into lake areas, in this case, Lake St. Clair, the water is daylighted and allowed to seep into the ground through a more natural process. So, in this case, all the lateral lines that run perpendicular to the Sterling Relief Drain, namely down roads that are along the Sterling Relief Drain, currently drain into a big pipe under the Sterling Relief Drain. That goes in the Moravian Red Run Drain, and then eventually into Lake St. Clair. So, you can see through this daylighting process, there's like a stream-type effect, and through the natural vegetation, new trees, plants that are intended to absorb water, the more natural phenomenon occurs. So, this work is already starting. The first section will be from Dodge Park Road to Shaner, and then the other way to Van Dyke. There'll be thousands of trees planted as part of this process, so you can look forward to seeing a much improved Sterling Relief Drain. And I also wanted to highlight, a component of this project will be improving some of the crossings, and that would be at Shaner, Dodge Park, Mound, and Ryan Road, and on the far west end, a road called Ivy. So, this is an example of what one of the crossings looks like right now, this is at Shaner Road. Needless to say, this is somewhat unsightly, the fence has deteriorated, there's vines growing into it. In the summertime, it's very hard to control the weeds and so on. We have come up with a new concept that will be implemented as part of this plan, where the dilapidated fencing will be removed, new fencing put in, and respite areas created along these crossings, since they're basically the midpoint between the mile stretch between Metro Parkway and 15 Mile Road. So, not only will the fencing be improved, but there'll be benches and a trash receptacle and some new vegetation installed at these crossings, too. So, look forward to all that work occurring over the next year or so, and it will be an improvement for our city. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. We have three presentations tonight, so we're gonna get started with the first, which is a presentation of the 14th, 15th recipients of a Sterling Heights Fire Department Survival Coin. Chief Martin is here to do the presentations, Chief Martin.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpoel, members of council, and Mr. Koszyuski. I can't tell you how pleased I am to be here tonight to share with you a couple of excellent stories. And I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but teamwork again has made this such a success, all the way from the 911 call with the dispatchers, to the police department, to the fire department, to the hospital, till the time the patient went home surviving a cardiac arrest. So, the first one I'd like to talk about happened on August 15th, 2018. A 911 call went in by Mr. Carl DeLu, who was talking to the dispatcher about his wife having difficulty breathing. His wife, Michelle, then went unresponsive, most likely slipping into cardiac arrest. I can tell you that the dispatcher did an absolute phenomenal job talking Carl through getting his wife on the ground, starting CPR, even though Carl had never been trained in CPR. I can't give her enough credit for what went on for those few minutes while Engine 4 and Squad 4 and Rescue 1 were responding. So, the FD responded, on Engine 4 that day was Lieutenant Dan Zender, Sergeant Dave Cuney, and firefighter Aaron Sanders. Our ambulance number four had Kevin Cranston and Vito Adamo on it, and Rescue 1 with Lieutenant Tim Ferguson and Sergeant Ken Kugelman responded. When they arrived, they quickly took over the treatment of Mrs. DeLu, and over the next 20 minutes proceeded to do several life-saving procedures and things that they worked fearlessly to save her life. After her third defibrillation, her system was stabilized, her heart started beating again, and she actually started breathing on her own. She remained unconscious all the way to the hospital, they turned over to the care, to the staff at St. John McCombe Hospital, where she stayed for 31 days before being released. And she is here tonight to become the 14th Survival Coin recipient. So, I would like to have Mrs. DeLu come up, and also Lieutenant Dan Zender, please.
On behalf, on behalf of the Sterling Heights Fire Department, we'd like to present you with the Survival Coin. Thank you very much.
And she told her husband Carl he has to say a few words, so Carl?
Don't sit down.
I'm just gonna take a few moments to explain the journey that we went on. As you said, on August the 15th, my wife had a heart attack. As we were talking, I was speaking to her in the chair, she basically died. I called, the 911 operator was fantastic. She was unresponsive when the regular crews show up. They worked on my wife with great precision and teamwork. After many minutes of hard work, and he already said that three times with the defibrillators, they finally got a response. They rushed my wife to St. John's McCombe, they put my wife in ICU on a ventilator and more IVs than I could have imagined. The ventilator kept her breathing, and a hypothermia machine kept her cool. After six days, a neurosurgeon took me and my family aside to tell us of her condition. At that point, she only had 5% brain function and only using 25% of her heart. He also said that the woman I knew as my wife is probably no longer there. At that time, I made the most difficult decision of my life, I took her off of life support and I put her on comfort care. Now, comfort care is where they, no food or water, just medication if they feel it's After two days, I received a phone call from the doctor. He said, "A remarkable event has happened, she opened her eyes." Not only did she open her eyes, but she tracked the doctor as he walked around the bed. He said that was a good sign. Two days later, another call, he said, "She's talking." And I said, "What?" And she'd been without food or water now for 11 days. She told the nurse she was hungry. What should I do? Because I put her under the comfort care, and they needed my authority to say, "Feed her," so I told them to feed her. Two days later, she was feeding herself. I came in the room, she was up feeding herself, even though she was eating pureed food because the trach tube had caused swallowing problems. Her mental capacity started coming back a few days after that. I would be able to point to the wall and ask her what word was on the wall, there was a board with words on it, and she would say Thursday, that was the, so we could see she was coming back. My wife has no memory of the first 25 days of her stay in the hospital, but she can recall her move to the rehab section of the hospital where she had physical occupation and speech therapy. She was in the hospital for a total of 31 days. Her heart catheterization found that she had three vein blockages, 80 to 99.9% blocked. She went in, she had open heart surgery on October the 19th, it was a four bypass procedure. She recovered and was released on October 25th. Now, that was the same day as our 26th wedding anniversary.
Of course.
Now, that got me to think about our wedding vows and how we attested them. For richer or poorer, well, we're on the poorer side right now because my wife lost her job after 31 years, about three years ago. In sickness and in health, I believe we're over the sickness part, but she still has a way to go to full recovery. Now, I don't believe that many couples have passed their last test till death do us part, but we have thanks to the people here that saved my wife. There are not enough words or ways for me to say thank you. In this day and age, the way our first responders are being treated is a shame. On the worst day of your life, they're the ones to come to help without hesitation, and they do what needs to be done. Without the help and dedication of these fine people, my wife would not be here today. All I can say is that you're very special people, and the job you're doing truly changes people's lives. On behalf of me and my family, I thank you for your dedication and help. Thank you.
I can't top that. But I'm gonna give it a shot. So, the next one, Mayor Taylor, is number 15. On September 1st, 2018, another 911 call went in from the wife of Mr. Sabah Dardar. Again, I can't stress enough the job of the dispatcher, so at this time, I would like to have Melissa Myronna come up here, if she doesn't mind. Her family is here with her. So, council, city manager, I shared with you the 911 call, and I just can't believe that that three or four minutes that Melissa was on the phone with Mr. Dardar's wife explaining how to get him on the ground, how to start CPR, first locating where they were, and again, I can't stress enough, I could never do the job you do. And we're here today because of you, so thank you very much. So, again, with the teamwork, Sterling Heights Police Department Officer Sean Birch arrived and began CPR. Sean couldn't be here tonight, but I want to make sure to thank him, too, because, again, part of the link in the chain, while Engine 2 and Squad 2 were responding, Engine 2 had Lieutenant Rich Feeney on it, FEO Sean Watson on it, firefighter Matt Mardeus, who's here again tonight, this is his second Survival Coin in the eight months he's been on the department. Sterling Squad 2 had firefighters Stephen Cluse and Eric Raffinaz, and Rescue 1 had lieutenants Tony Lulick and Jeff Vergowan. Mayor Taylor, this is a 15th Survival Coin, and this is a miracle. I've already said it once with one of our survival coins, but Mr. Dardar, upon our response of the fire department, was found to be in a systole. A systole is basically flatlined, it doesn't get any worse than a systole, and I guarantee you that very minimal amount of people respond to any treatment when you're in a systole. Needless to say, for the next 30 minutes, the fire department did many things to Mr. Dardar. Their medications and their CPR actually started some activity in his heart and allowed them to provide defibrillations. And it wasn't until eight defibrillations later, just prior to getting to Henry Ford McCombe, did Mr. Dardar's condition improve. I can assure you that when those guys left the hospital that day, they probably didn't think he would survive, but lo and behold, he is here tonight. So, I would like to have Mr. Dardar come up here, and firefighter Matt Mardeus, please.
On behalf of the Sterling Heights Fire Department, I'd like to present to you the 15th Survival Coin.
Mayor, I have a little bit of a special treat. Mr. Dardar's wife or daughter didn't want to talk, but I have two of his grandkids that would like to speak, so if I could get Isaiah and Gabriella up here, Isaac and Gabriella, please.
It's a miracle that my grandpa survived in this part of what happened to him, and I want to say thank you for everyone who helped him in this situation. That's all I have to say, thank you, Merry Christmas.
That's all I have on this presentation.
All right, thank you very much, chief. At this time, I will open it up to anyone on council who has any comments or would like to say anything. Mayor Protem Saroski.
Wow, I don't usually be brought to tears, but those grandchildren are beautiful, Mr. Dardar, and your grandson is so happy to have you here, I could just see it in his face. Wonderful job to our dispatcher, we did listen to the 911 call, oh my goodness gracious. As a triage nurse, former triage nurse, I know the stress you can be under, and that was beyond excellent. You did a fantastic job. And again, I'm so happy that you were there with her, Carl, because you kept her alive. We listened, as I said, to that tape, and you were fantastic. I wish I could clone you from, you know, there's many people who can't do what you did, so thank you again. And on behalf of, you know, the city council, and just for myself, actually, our firefighters are excellent. And they don't go on so many fire runs as they do emergency runs, obviously, and they keep us alive, they keep us out of the crazy things we get ourselves into, so again, thank you to our firefighters.
Council, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Usually, when we ask family members to come here and speak, they say very little, but today, Mr. DeLu, it's a tribute to, first of all, your family, and then for you to be so grateful to our family and for what happened, but truly, you are blessed, the two of you being married for 26 years, this was a blessing, and we look at it as a miracle. And the same, yes, and the same thing for Mr. Dardar. It's wonderful to hear how we interacted with your families, and when you see our trucks and our vehicles say, you know, our families helping your families, this truly is a testament of how much we are committed to making sure that Sterling Heights is one of the best places in the country to live. Thank you, all of you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
I just want to congratulate both Mr. Dardar and Ms. DeLu, and all of our firefighters and first responders for the excellent job they did. I think it really shows how we've put together a system here in Sterling Heights where we have teamwork on behalf of the police, on behalf of the dispatchers from Macomb County, on behalf of the fire department, and, you know, it shows that our ALS transport system is really working and helping the community. I just have to say that I want to thank you and your firefighters for the work they've done, I want to thank Macomb County, I want to thank our police department, I want to especially thank you, Mr. Dardar and Mr. DeLu, for being here, because in this Christmas season, really is a blessing to have so many people still with us, so thank you so much.
Council, anyone else? Just a couple of thoughts, I had, we did, council provided the 911 tapes for both of these calls, and what I'll tell you is that they were very similar circumstances, I would say, both people, victims here were having trouble breathing, and the 911 dispatcher walked them through CPR, in this, in one case, the husband, in the other case, the wife, and that's kind of where the similarities end, if you listen to the calls, very, very different calls. And what it showed to me is that the dispatcher was able, in both circumstances, with very different calls. And what I mean by that, you can imagine, if you're in that situation, you'd be very stressed out, and it would be very difficult for you to listen and do what you need to do. And the way that the dispatchers were able to get the spouses to do what they needed to do in order to preserve their spouses' lives, in very different circumstances, talks and speaks to the training that they have and the professionalism that they have as a dispatcher. So, it starts with that call to 911, and then it goes to the family member, and I think we oftentimes overlook that our fire department does a lot, like the Citizens Fire Academy and all those things, to reach out, because if you don't know CPR, if you don't have the smoke alarms, if you don't do what you need to do to protect yourself and your family, then the minutes that it takes for our fire department and our police department to get there, the tragedy might strike before they can get there. So, our fire department and police department do a lot to get you, so that you, and the dispatchers, obviously, too, so that you can save that person before the emergency responders arrive. Then, when our police and fire get there, I've observed it firsthand, I don't know that there's a better team in the entire state of Michigan, I wouldn't want to be in a car accident or see a loved one have a cardiac arrest anywhere else. Then, we're lucky to have great hospitals with dedicated staffs, and, you know, a lot of times, they come to these ceremonies, which speaks to just how, they take a lot of pride, obviously, in saving somebody's life. You know, sometimes, we, like our jobs, I think, as city council members, and we think we do a good job, but we don't save people's lives like that, and that's serious business, and you guys do it day in and day out, and we appreciate it so much, and we thank you for everything that you do. Congratulations to Mr. Dardar and Mrs. DeLu, we're lucky to have you back here in Sterling Heights. God bless you both, and God bless the Sterling Heights Police Department, the fire department, the dispatchers, all the first responders in the hospitals who cared for you. So, one more big round of applause for everybody involved. All right, with that, chief, we do have a second presentation tonight, and I'll hand it back over to you.
Again, Mayor Taylor, thank you, I'm glad to be here tonight to swear in three new firefighters who started their careers with the Sterling Heights Fire Department just yesterday. Gentlemen, if you don't mind coming up here. To my immediate right and moving away from me is Nicholas Seraphin, he's 24 years old. He grew up in Warren and attended Centerline High School. He went to the Macomb Community College Fire Academy and got his paramedic training at Macomb Community College as well. He started his firefighting career in Centerline Department of Public Safety, and he moved to Hazel Park for about a year before we hired him. His father is also a retired captain from the Warren Fire Department. Next to him is John Farina, he is 24. He grew up in Maumee, Ohio, and attended Maumee High School. He went to Owens Community College for his fire academy training and his medical training, and he has worked for the Defiance Fire Department since 2016. And next to him is Michael Peterson. Michael is only 21, and he's accomplished, been able to accomplish getting all of the training and the paramedic license by the age of 21, which is a lot to be said about that. So, he's certainly dedicated, and we're glad to have him. He grew up in Macomb County, and he graduated from Dakota High School. He also attended Macomb Community College Fire Academy and Paramedic Class, and he worked previously with MedStar, Macomb Township Fire Department, and Waterford Regional. And his father is currently a firefighter with Macomb Township. So, gentlemen, if you don't mind sneaking over a little bit, and I'm gonna swear you in. Raise your right hand, repeat after name. I state your name.
I, John Wasery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the city of Sterling Heights charter.
And the city of Sterling Heights charter.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And I will discharge duties in my office to the best of my ability.
And I will discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Gentlemen, congratulations. Mr. Mayor, council, if you don't mind coming down and shaking their hands and congratulating and welcoming aboard.
Absolutely.
Congratulations and welcome.
I'd like to thank the council, Chief Martin, and the City of Sterling Heights as a whole for presenting me with this opportunity, and having a long and healthy career at the City of Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I will, uh...[609.35][609.35](applause). Chief, anything else? That's all I have, sir. Okay, Counsel, any comments? If not, congratulations, welcome aboard. I think you see the type of community that we have, and, you know, I always like to see there's firefighters who have, who've been either in the field before or have family members in the field. We think that you're going to be here for a very long time. We hope you find that it is a destination city for firefighters. We've got a great community that will support you, and we've got a great city council that will support you, too. So, good luck to all of you. Stay safe and keep us safe. Thank you. And, Chief, is that it?
Yeah, if we could just be excused, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. We, one more big round of applause for all the firefighters.[628.35][628.35](applause). Now, we'll, I think a lot of the people are here for the firefighters, right? So we will excuse everybody, maybe take about a two-minute recess, but tomorrow, we've got the CPAs coming up next. Very exciting stuff. All right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We have another presentation tonight, and this is to receive the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018. We have a presentation from our finance and budget director and from our CPAs, Plant and Moran. We'll start with our finance and budget director, Mrs. Jennifer Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just waiting for it to come up on the screen. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Kachubski and Mr. Vanderpoel. I'm very happy to be here tonight to present the results of the 2018 financial audit. Every year, as you know, independent auditors review our financial statements and our accounting procedures. The audit is very time-consuming and detailed process, and involves the cooperation of many employees throughout the organization. And I would like to thank everyone who was involved, especially Nick Mackey and the entire finance team, who have once again done an excellent job. We have prepared a short presentation to review the audit findings, and the full 150-page audit report has been supplied to the city council and is also available on the city's website, and hard copies are available at the library. So we'll start with a summary of our audited financial results for, again, fiscal year 2018. General revenues totaled $100.3 million, and expenditures totaled $92.9 million. This means we were able to add $7.4 million to general fund reserves. This brings our total general fund balance to $24.7 million, or 26.6% of expenses. And in 2019, we are projected to add an additional $1.1 million to reserves. However, our fund balance percentage will decrease slightly because we have higher expenses primarily related to road construction. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, this year, we were able to add a significant amount to fund balance, helping us to reach our goal of 25% of expenditures earlier than planned. However, a large portion of the increase in reserves is due to two significant one-time variances that I'd like to point out. The first one-time addition to fund balance is the receipt of additional $2.7 million in extra personal property tax proration from the state of Michigan. Now, this is over and above our calculated loss on property tax reimbursements, and it is unknown how long this payment will continue. It is definitely something that we can't count on receiving every year. And second, we had personnel savings, again, this year in the police department, $1.3 million less than budgeted. And again, as we all know, we had some difficulty filling the police positions this year, and that created a budget variance that was to the positive. However, I am pleased to say that as of today, we are fully staffed, and that means that we won't keep, keep realizing these budgetary savings. Compared to the last year, general fund revenues increased $5 million, or 5.3%. Some of the main reasons were a 2.4% increase in property taxes, increases in revenue sharing, and the personal property tax reimbursement that I just mentioned. We had federal grant revenue from the SAFE for Grant, and a new revenue stream from EMS Transport, and those were the major reasons for the increase. And you can see, we were very close to budgeted amounts, slightly exceeding our revenue-budget targets. Expenditures increased by 3.5 million, or 3.9% from last year. We had increases in pension contributions, general liability insurance, vehicle parts and service, transfers to major roads, and the fire department personnel for EMS were the major reasons for the increase over the prior year. Total expenditures were lower than budget, and every department came within 0.8% of their amended budget. Now, we're going to look at the activity in some of our other major funds. First, the capital improvement fund. The original 2018 budget included $3.9 million of capital improvements, plus a $2.2 million carryforward from the prior year, for a total of $6.1 million. $3.8 million of these purchases were completed in the current year, and $1.8 million will be carried forward into 2019. Some of the major purchases for 2018 included the continuation of the vehicle replacement plan, the replacement of the final four emergency warning sirens, the purchase of a tandem axle dump truck and an aerial sign truck, the implementation of the On-Base Agenda Management System, and the replacement of our storage and controlling services. Now, on to the road funds. This year's neighborhood road projects totaled $7 million, which included an additional $1.3 million approved by council on top of the original budget, which allowed for the reconstruction of four additional local streets. 2019 will see a continuation of this investment with a total local road construction budget of $4.2 million, over $3.3 million of which is a direct result of the Safe Streets Millage, and will enable the reconstruction of 17 local roads. And as we all know, we have continued to see increased investments in major roads. And I'm sure we can all attest that 2018 was a very busy construction year. Construction cones could be seen on Canal Road, 15 Mile, M-59, Clinton River, and 17 Mile, and I could go on, but I'll stop. And in 2019, we'll be just as busy with projects planned for Van Dyke, Mound Road, Utica Road, Shaner, Merrill Road, and 19 Mile. In addition to an increase in road funding from the state of Michigan, the city issued an $8.2 million road bond in 2017 to help fund these critical repairs. The 2019 budget included a one-time $1 mil increase and additional funding from the general fund to increase road investment even further. Next on to the Parks and Recreation Fund. Evidence of the voter-approved recreating recreation millage can be seen around the city. Some of the highlights from 2018 include the opening of the skate park, the completion of the Dodge Park improvements, and the grand reopening at our 50th anniversary celebration, the groundbreaking on the community center, and numerous other improvements that touched nearly every park in the city. And finally, the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund experienced a small operational loss in the current fiscal year, primarily due to lower usage. Usage was 4.6% lower than estimated for the budget, and nearly 12% lower than the 10-year average. However, as you can see from the chart, we have worked to minimize losses in the water and sewer system in the past two years, after experiencing significant losses during the downturn. The current year's budget is projected to begin replenishing reserves, which is very important for future infrastructure improvements. Now, an update on our city retirement funds. The city has continued to prioritize funding of its three retirement plans. The retiree medical plan has increased its funding level 4.2% over last year to 55.1% funded. The city remains committed to improve the funding level of this plan, which has increased from 9% funded in 2008. The funding level of the general employee pension system decreased slightly to 77.3% funded, primarily due to an actual rate of return of 7.16 compared to the assumed rate of 7.5. The retiree medical fund and general employees pension plan are both closed to new hires. The funding level of the police and fire plan decreased to 62.9%. The assumed rate of return was decreased, and the mortality table was updated to account for longer lifespans. Both of these changes increased the pension liability. However, more realistic assumptions will ensure the long-term viability of the plan. And this is the only plan that is still open to new hires. We continue to benchmark ourselves to other communities, and here's just three examples. This chart compares the tax rates for other Macomb County communities to the, for the prior year. The average tax rate for all Macomb cities is over 22 mils. We are 6.4 mils below the average, and even with the $1 mil one-time increase in the current year, are still well below the county average. The taxes paid per resident remain the lowest of any of the 10 largest Michigan cities by population as well. And finally, as I had mentioned, we are continuing to make progress restoring general fund reserves. This chart shows the general fund reserves per resident in our comparable communities from last year, and the results from this current audit would increase this number to $190 per resident. So we are on the right path, following our long-term plan to increase reserves. So in conclusion, the budget continues to provide us with an accurate look at our actual spending. We are currently on track with our long-term financial plan, and we are continuing to build up our general fund reserves. We are continuing to update our actuarial assumptions to further increase funding in our pension plans. We have continued to reinvest in our capital assets and make good progress on our road repairs, and we've done this while keeping property taxes low. The average homeowner pays $88 per month for city taxes, and we are still the lowest in taxes paid per resident of our comparable communities. Keeping in mind that city revenues increases are capped by inflation, which is estimated to be 2.4% next year, however, is forecasted to remain at 2% or lower for at least the next 10 years. Making it critical that we follow our long-term plan and continue to build up reserves so we can... And this concludes my overview, and now I would like to introduce Dave Hallesek, partner from Plant Moran, our independent auditors. They have spent the past several months reviewing our financial records and operations, and have issued an unmodified opinion on the audited financial, which is the highest rating possible. And then Nick Mackey, city controller, will present the city council with the GFOA financial awards received for both our city budget and financial reports.
Thanks, Jennifer. Again, my name's Dave Hallesek. I'm an audit partner with Plant Moran, and with me this evening is Rumsey Abdullah. He is a senior associate within our firm, and we're here to discuss some other parts of the audit, other than the financial highlights that Ms. Varney did a wonderful job of, of covering this evening. So she covered all of this information in that short period of time. Now, we did cover all of this information, Rumsey, myself, with city management a couple, couple weeks ago, to, to, really, we go through the financial statement, the federal programs audit, as well as the required letters of communications, just to make sure everybody's on the same page that the information that was turned over for audit was indeed compiled correctly within the financial statements audited, and, and make sure everybody's understanding what the final results of the audit product was. So with that, while I don't want to necessarily cover anything financial, because I think Ms. Varney's done a terrific job of doing so, I did want to talk about a couple non-financial items before it turns, turn over to Rumsey to talk about the opinion. We've spent a lot of time before, before city council over the last couple of years talking about legacy costs. It's been, you know, a hot topic, not only in local government, but at the state level as well. And when I was here a year ago, there was some discussion about legacy costs and the measurements, and maybe something being implemented at, at the state level that would be trickled down and, and required certain reporting by the local units of government. As you may know, Public Act 202 of 2017 was passed in December of last year after we met. But it really, it, it did a number of things, but really, primarily what it was trying to do was identify trusts, pensions, whatever you want to call them, that were potentially underfunded, and they'll, and I'll describe what underfunded means, but identify what those, what those underfunded trusts or pensions are, were, address them, have local units give thought on, on, on how they're going to address those, those items. Ms. Varney had, had a graph up earlier that indicated your funding levels of your two pension funds, as well as your, as well as your retiree health fund, and I, I'll refresh, refresh the numbers, but your general employees retirement system funding level was at 77% funded as of June 30, 2018. The police and fire pension was at 62.9% funded. As part of Public Act 202, legislature deemed that anything under 60% funded would be unfunded, underfunded. So, we talked a little bit about last, this last year, the city's done a terrific job of making sure that these, these systems are funded correctly. They're now meeting the measurements that have been passed by treasury, and, I mean, it's a big deal for, for, for two things, to be honest. One is, it's important to have it funded, so when, when, when benefit payments... One is it's important to have it funded, so when benefit payments come due, the resources are there. But secondly, those plans that are underfunded have to come up with corrective action plans that need to be approved by a small committee at the state level, and if they don't agree with that, there's oversight that needs to be done. So it's really important that the city continues to maintain that, and you've done a terrific job so far. The retirement healthcare fund was at 55% funded, and the legislature, through Public Act 202, deemed underfunding at less than 40%. So again, I know we talked about it in last year. We knew something was coming, weren't sure it was going to be 20%, 30%. It ended up being a higher number than was anticipated. As Ms. Varney had indicated, the city's been very proactive of funding this benefit. And again, terrific, so you've got the resources available when those items come due, but secondly, not having to go through the exercise of reporting back up to Treasury, you know, for potential underfunding. So kudos to the city. I've been in front of a number of communities in November, December. I've probably had three that haven't had to go through the corrective action plan, City Sterling Heights being one of them. So congratulations. Couple other things I'd like to cover, and it's really related around controls versus financial numbers. So, you know, a lot of the information that was presented by Ms. Varney is financial nature, but the only reason that those numbers are good is because of the controls that are put in place. And while we don't do an internal control audit, part of our audit process does require us to document, understand, and test the internal control process. And if we, if during our testing, we deem to be any weaknesses in the system, we'd need to report it out to this body at this time, as well as try to quantify what the potential impact of those weaknesses could have on the financial statements. So as a result of this year's audit, nothing came to our attention that would have resulted in a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So why is that important? Two things. One, it's an A grade on your internal control system, which is important. But what it also means is that the information that is provided to you throughout the year, financial information, is reliable information. We're not coming in at the end of the year and making significant journal entries and basically making the financial statements look nothing like what's presented to you on an annual basis. So that's important. That should make you feel good. The accounting and finance staff do a terrific job. We could tell through our testing throughout the year with accumulating and reporting out that information. Then finally, when a local unit has over $750,000 of federal expenditures incurred during any year, there's a separate federal awards audit that's required. City of Sterling Heights' past year had over $4 million of federal expenditures. So we follow the circular and determine what programs we need to test, and we test for compliance within the grant provisions of those major programs. As a result of this year's federal programs audit, again, we found no weaknesses, no noncompliance items, and we're giving the federal programs audit an A grade as well. So again, important for different reasons. The control is important, but if we were to find something that didn't, was noncompliant, there would be a chance that money that was spent that you thought you were going to be reimbursed for and indeed reimbursed for from a grant perspective, you could actually get charged back for it if it was noncompliant with the grant. So again, finance, all your finance folks, all your accounting folks, anybody who has anything to do with anything that's been reported through the financials, as well as the federal programs, just did a terrific job for us to be able to communicate the results we've had here today. So I'll turn it over to Rumsey, who's going to talk a little bit about the opinion itself.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, everyone. So we've covered everything, and I think pretty much we've kind of hit on everything, so some of this might seem repetitive. But I did want to cover the audit, the independent audit report, which is in the big CAFRA document. It's going to be the first page, page number one in the financial section. This entire document essentially represents the city's books and records. The only page that is Plant Moran's document is this independent audit report. The objective of this report is to let the reader know, and to let you know that, to assess the reliability of the numbers in the financial statements. As has been mentioned, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which essentially means that the financial statements, in our opinion, are free of material misstatement. Circling back on one of Dave's comments, we did not have any required journal entries to get to this point. So sometimes when we start an audit, we may identify, you know, tens, dozens of entries that are required to get to the financial statements to this point. We had zero, which speaks to the condition of the books and records of the city. The second point I want to make is in the financial statements, I'm sorry, in the independent audit report, there is a mention of the implementation of GASB 75. GASB 75 is an accounting rule change essentially that went into place this year that requires the city to record the unfunded actuarial accrued liability for OPEB on the balance sheet. So this number has always been reported in the footnotes of the financial statements. The city's been proactive at monitoring this number and funding it, as we've seen, but it's just to let the reader of the financial statements know that the city implemented that new accounting rule this year, and that is required for all local units of government. So with that, that is essentially the opinion, unmodified opinion. Again, the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Nick Mackey.
Thanks, Rumsey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to be here tonight with Ms. Varney and Plant Moran to highlight our city's financial excellence over this past year, and thank you for your continued support of the Finance and Budget Department. Sterling Heights has a long history of excellence in financial reporting, which is demonstrated by the 29 consecutive years that we've received the GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting, as well as the 30 years we've received the distinguished budget award from the same organization. These awards represent the city's commitment to accurate, functional, and transparent financial reporting and budgeting, and are tangible proof of our financial staff's work ethic, dedication, and technical expertise. Out of more than 1,700 governmental units in our state, only around 100 achieved the recognition that we are receiving for our comprehensive annual financial report, and even less receive it for the budget. So once again, we have received these prestigious awards, and it's my privilege tonight to
Okay, thank you very much to everyone. Anything else, Mrs. Varney?
No.
Okay, at this time then, I'll open it up to council for a, we do have a suggested action here, so would somebody like to make the suggested action? Make the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolved to receive and accept the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
I just think this is a testament to the great budgeting and finance department we have, and to have such great books that have no journal entries or anything, I think that speaks to their hard work and dedication to their jobs.
Thank you. Council, any questions of anyone? Any comments? Mayor Protem Sarowski?
I'm holding right now the Government Finance Officers Association Award, and we have received this award not just this year, but since 2012. And that's a testament to both our great city management, Ms. Varney, and even Brian Baker prior to her. And I just think that's remarkable. In this day and age, money is extremely, how we spend our money and how we take care of your resources, residents, is extremely important to me, and I'm very happy to see that we've been doing such a good job for so long.
Counsel, anyone else?
Yes.
If nobody else would like to speak, I'll just say thank you, Mrs. Varney, and thank you, Nick Mackey, and to the team at Plant Moran for your hard work. We see you in the halls here every day for weeks and weeks, poring over these documents. And the end result is an opinion that shows us that we can be proud of the work that our finance and budget team do and that our accountants do here. And so thank you very much for your work, and most importantly, thank you to the team here in Sterling Heights that gives us the reliable information that we, as the council, can take and help in making our decisions. And it's also a great benefit, huge benefit, for the residents of Sterling Heights to have you here. So thank you very much. Without any further discussion on this item, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance adoption. This is to adopt an ordinance amending the City Code to prohibit recreational marijuana Act of 2018 within the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? I'll take you, Mr. Cavalli.
All righty. Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city administration, I'd like to personally thank you, as always, for being able to speak, especially on such a huge and divisive topic. I would like to preface this all by reminding you that I have the utmost respect for every single one of you and for your decision-making abilities. That being said, based on the initial vote taken two weeks ago, it would appear to me that some of you are making a tremendous mistake. An extremely important decision has been put in front of you, and it appears that some of you are allowing for your personal misgivings on the recreational use of marijuana to cloud your better judgment and cause you to forget your duty as elected officials to this city, which is simply to represent the will of the residents. I have not personally partaken in the use of marijuana. However, in November, I voted in favor of legalizing the recreational use, as did many residents of this city, in fact, a majority of them. I understand a number of your concerns with legalized growth and sale operations in the city, but the pros far outweigh the cons, much in the same way that the voice of your constituents should outweigh your own. Speaking from a strictly fiscal position, we would be making an egregious mistake in turning down the new streams of tax revenue coming into our city, not only in the form of our portion of the state marijuana tax, but also in the influx of property taxes from these new businesses. These revenue streams should far outpace your projected loss in property values that you cite as a direct result of proximity to legal growth and sale operations within the city. In fact, speaking of location, I know one of the issues has been attempting to limit location, but if that was truthfully the aim of this motion, the ordinance would look much different than it does. According to Section 6.2b of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, quote, "A municipality may adopt other ordinances that are not unreasonably impracticable and do not conflict with this act or with any rule promulgated pursuant to this act or that. Regulate the time, place, and manner of operation of marijuana establishments and of the production, manufacture, sale, or display of marijuana accessories. The Act as passed gives you every option to limit and regulate sales within the city and growth without a complete and total ban on the industry. There should not even be a need for debate for this today. The people that you are sworn to represent support the recreational use of marijuana and deserve to be able to do so, deserve to be able to partake in this with general ease and convenience. No one should have to leave the limits of their city to make a legal purchase or to establish a legal business. I can no longer believe that this is about limitation and regulation or that this topic will ever be visited again, because if it did, you would use what was able, or what was set out for you in Section 6.2b, or there would be a moratorium or sunset clause set on this ordinance. And as it is written, there is none." So I hope your guys' minds are open, and I hope my opinion's been heard. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavalli. Who would like to be next? All right, I'll start with on my left, I guess, Ms. Elias.
What an eloquent speaker, but false. Let me just say, my name is Senna. I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I wanted to support the ordinance ban, not because it disrespects the will of the people, but basically supports and keeps that, minimizes the risk to the city. In order for us to make plans, regulate, and license these distribution or establishments, it's important to have the basic foundation laid by the state. Since the state has not initiated that yet, and will take a while to do so, I think it would be not wise or prudent to go forward on our own initiative. Best way to say it is, we generally don't put the cart before the horse. Since the state is the one initiating it, it would be best to see what the parameters are and then lay the foundation for our city and for our residents. I respect the voice of the people. I may not agree with it, but I do respect it, and I think we should do what's best for them. Oh, gosh, my computer died. Hold on one minute. The thing I wanted to say basically is, three of the council members, the male members, all presume to equate or compare the recreation, the recreating recreation with this law that was recently passed. They are not the same. The recreating recreation was based on the initiative that the city stated. They knew the cost, they knew the plans, they knew exactly what was being laid out for them, because they were in control of it. This is now the state issue. We are not in control of what the state licensing or regulation does. So we would presume to be wise and prudent to wait to make that decision, because it would put less risk to the people, to the city financially, doing double work, making corrections, when you could do it right the first time. So I'm definitely for this. I can't imagine anybody wishing to take a stance when the foundation is not yet laid by the state. So I just ask that you support the ban and continue until we have the footing from the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Elias. Take you next, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lori Tatters. I'm a resident, and for the last 30 years, I've been involved with drug abuse, working with family members and people that are addicted. A lot of people will say marijuana is not addictive. I have sat and listened to testimony after testimony of people that are addicted to marijuana. I've seen people that have had health issues, have died from smoking marijuana, heart disease, and everything else in the 30 years that I've been involved in substance abuse. I've seen family members that have had to deal with people that are addicted to marijuana. Have any of you ever lived with somebody that has been addicted to marijuana? That's my question. I would ask you to ponder, as a family member, do you know anyone that I have talked to family members who have gone without because their addicted person has spent money on marijuana instead of groceries? I just hope and pray that the people here consider the fact that we do not want to bring a certain element into this city, and I hope that you will support this ordinance amending and prohibiting this to happen. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tatters. Anyone else? You, sir, on my left.
My name's Bill Yurbeck, I'm a resident here, and congratulations to all of you for your fine work this evening, and accolades that were presented here this evening by all concerned, and a total quality management type of perspective. I can appreciate that. I have some handouts for the council members and mayor. And I'm not going to go through the literature this evening, but I do support the initiative of banning marijuana in the city here, and I think we also should wait for the perspective of Senator Mikoff's results on his Senate Bill 1243 that's up there. Of course, they're going to have to get about 70% I understand vote collection there, meaning both the Republican and Democrat, and passing is going to be questionable, I guess, over time, but that's the way things are. But wait and see. My comments here this evening that I just handed out to you is going to be talking basically about the risk and that analysis, how it affects the workforce, and also traffic accidents, and also impact on the neighborhood and cartel. So it deals basically with the perspective of stores that you outlined earlier about quantity of stores, how many, and things of that nature. quantity of stores, how many, and things of that nature. So that's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next? Take you.
Mr. Mayor, Nathan Inks, Sterling Heights resident. Thank you, and good evening to you, the council and the city administration. I personally support the legalization of marijuana, believe that businesses in the city would give the residents an opportunity to buy goods and services that they want, as well as provide a additional revenue for the city. However, recognizing that marijuana is still illegal at the federal level and that this area of the law is still very fluid, I was in opposition to proposal one. I don't believe that Michigan should be one of the testbeds for figuring out how to legalize and regulate marijuana. I have similar views for the city now that proposal one has passed. I think that we should go forward with the status quo for the time being, kind of see how proposal one plays out, and maybe we can reanalyze this at some point once we know how proposal one is actually going to work after it's been in effect for a while. One issue that I do think is worth addressing is this argument that prohibiting marijuana establishments would be running contrary to what the people voted in favor of. People of Sterling Heights or Michigan have not voted whether the city of Sterling Heights should have marijuana establishments. I don't think it's fair to equate support or opposition on proposal one with support or opposition on marijuana establishments in the city. I think it's worth keeping in mind the fact that proposal one itself established the very opt-out procedure that this council is considering right now. When people voted in favor of proposal one, in addition to voting in favor of allowing individuals to use marijuana recreationally, they also voted in favor of allowing cities to opt out of having marijuana establishments within their boundaries. I think it's fair to assume that there are people who voted for proposal one because they thought that individuals should have the ability to consume marijuana as a, recreationally, and that cities should be able to allow marijuana establishments within their boundaries. However, I think those same people who voted for proposal one could have also thought that they're individual cities, it may not be in their best interest to have those establishments within their boundaries. On the flip side, I think there were people who voted in opposition to proposal one, and I would be one of these people, who didn't like the proposal the way it was worded, but thought that cities at some point down the road should opt in to allow marijuana establishments within their boundaries, once we have kind of seen how the proposal's going to play out and how exactly it's going to, to work. So in conclusion, I think that the best course of action for the city would be maintain the status quo for now, reevaluate at some point in the future. I don't see any reason why there shouldn't be some type of sunset clause in the ordinance. I think this is a conversation worth having. I don't know that it would necessarily come up organically again without some type of sunset clause. I don't see any harm in that. If at some point in the future, the council was still the same, same mind and thought that marijuana establishments weren't the best thing for the city, or if the whole state realized, you know, hey, proposal one has been a complete disaster, we shouldn't do this, they can reauthorize and extend the ordinance. Lastly, I just want to thank the council, the mayor, and the city administration for being proactive on this issue. There are some cities who aren't really addressing this yet. I think it's gonna come to haunt them when the proposal goes into effect and they haven't really planned ahead, so thank you for planning ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Inks. Take you, sir.
Mayor, council. My name's Horace Johns. I've lived in the, in the city since 86, I believe. I don't do public speaking, okay? I have personal experience in that I was a child of the 60s. I have personal experiences that I'm a registered pharmacist. I have personal experience because in 1974, I spent a month with the first-class Eurail Pass, money in my pocket, and traveled across Europe, especially to Amsterdam, where drugs were legal. I witnessed a generation of youth who was lost in Amsterdam, okay? I see the effects of drug use in youth and adults. I don't see how you could even consider opening legal marijuana shops in Sterling Heights. You promote yourself as promoting the family-friendly city? Explain to me how it's family-friendly to bring recreational drug use into a city. I, I just, I can't see that, and I know there has to be a different perspective, but the only different perspective I can see is in a monetary sense, and when you're going to trade money for the youth of your city, I think you're making a very poor choice. Other than that, I hope that you will vote to pass the ordinance. You have no legal requirement to have the marijuana shops in your city. Forcing them to go to another city to get the drugs is not a problem, because there's no place you are in Sterling Heights where you can't go three miles and be out of the city. Three miles is not a terrible restriction on people. And if people are using recreational drugs, you know that some of them are driving, how many citizens is it okay to lose in traffic accidents to people on drugs that makes it worthwhile regardless of any amount of money you get? And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McGregor.
My name's William McGregor. I'm a resident of Sterling Heights. Today's my birthday, but we're going to move on from that. Anyway, so it came to my attention that some, maybe all, members of council probably have no idea how much it costs you grow your own marijuana, and I would hope so. I would hope none of you would have any idea how much it costs to grow your own marijuana, but it's certainly not free, and it's not like making daisies. I had to do a little research myself. It was, it was strenuous, but your electric bill is going to go up by about 100 bucks a month. Your, just to get started, really, your, some of those quote-unquote starter kits that they sell in like Colorado, and technically, you could buy them on Amazon, but anyways, the starter kits run around 800 to 1900 dollars, depending on, depending on what you're getting. And it's not, growing isn't new. People, it's not, this isn't the only state that when we legalized marijuana, we allowed people to grow. Now, the astronomical amount of plants we're allowing, that's, that's something to be talked about, but regardless, Denver allows three adult mature plants to be grown and cultivated, but people are still opting away from that. They're still opting to buy from a retail store. Why? Because the retail store, first of all, it's better. Second of all, it's, it's much easier. It takes time to, to grow anything. If anyone's a gardener, they know that it takes time to grow roses, and the, the process to, to grow cannabis plants is a lot more complicated. Why do you get fires? Because the certain kind of lighting that has to be on the cannabis plants is, it's very detrimental, like, that's why you have these fires, because there's a certain kind of light, it's a certain amount of energy that, that has to be expended on these plants. They're, they're not daisies. I also wanted to take this time to point out that there was some information that was given at the last city council meeting that was just completely false, or just misrepresented. So in section 9.1, in section 9.1, I'm going to skip right to C, because I don't really have that much time. "The property where the proposed marijuana establishment is to be located is not within an area zoned exclusively for residential use, and it is not within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12 unless a municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces the distance requirement." So it's very clear that you can't get a commercial product in a residential zone. Very clear that you can't have, it doesn't matter that marijuana is different from a tablet, you can't have it in a residential zone. Furthermore, "If a municipality limits the number of marijuana establishments," which, by the way, is an option, we don't have to have 20 marijuana establishments within the city, "that may be licensed in the municipality pursuant to the section 6 of this act, they shall decide among competing applications by a competitive process intended to select applicants who are best suited to operate in compliance with this act within the municipality." If the department, is section 16 now, "If the department does not timely promulgate rules as required by section 8 of this act, applications in accordance with section 9 of this act, beginning one year after the effective date of this act, an applicant may submit an application for a marijuana establishment directly to a municipality where the marijuana establishment will be located. If a marijuana establishment submits an application to a municipality under the section 2, the municipality shall issue a municipal license to the applicant within 90 days after the receipt of the application unless the municipality finds and notifies the applicant, the applicant is not in compliance with an ordinance adopted pursuant to this act." Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next? Take you, Mrs. Early.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and audience, and Jasmine Early speaking in support of the ordinance amending the city code to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city. We support this ordinance for common sense reasons. Our responsible stewards of the state and tax dollars of the residents, please vote yes on this ordinance. On November 6th, the board approved this proposal that is here, and I would like for you to read what is there, because that is what I'm going to talk about. In item 1, this proposal talks about individuals 21 and older, but if we see what is happening in states where this proposal has passed, you will realize the need to vote yes now. According to some smart approaches to marijuana...
Ms. Early, can I have you stay at one or the other, because the microphone cuts you in and out?
Sorry. I guess, yeah, but I don't know if they can hear me. Can they hear me?
Yeah, you can, we can hear you if you stand there.
Thank you. So according to some smart approaches to marijuana, they are seeing a noticeable increase in substance abuse among 12 and older. I had a teenager, I'm concerned about it. These are living proof of the unintended consequences of this type of laws. Then the real issue becomes our city using most resources, more resources to safeguard our youth from illegal use. Please see this chart and vote yes, because this ordinance, we needed to protect our youth. In the second item here, last meeting, the police chief stated that additional personnel and funds will be necessary for the policing and enforcing of the regulations. Who is going to pay for it? Are you planning another tax increase? Have you thought about it? Now, item 3, speaking about regulations at this point, our state doesn't have regulations for these businesses to function. Please vote yes. Approving this ordinance now is acting as a preventive step before the marijuana businesses set up jobs here without any regulation in place. Sterling Heights had a good reputation of managing businesses. We don't have regulations for them to come in. It's time to say, let's think about it, approve the ordinance. Tax revenue, as it says here about the revenue, tax revenue will be minimal compared to the cost to our city. We have, it says that 10% of the tax will be dedicated to implementation costs and et cetera. Our mayor stated in Facebook after he asked, and the question was asked, his answer was, quote, "My understanding is that if a city ups in 50% of the size tax revenue is split among all municipalities who up in, the other 80% goes to counties, schools, and roads. I believe that Sterling Heights may indirectly benefit for the other, from the other 80% even if it doesn't up in. So if we know we are benefiting, benefiting even if we have got less opt out, vote yes in the ordinance."
All right, Ms. Early, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Looks like the prodigal son has made his return. First of all, Mr. Johns, it was good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, man. I wish you guys would postpone this till the state makes up their mind what to do, because it came out today that they want to shrink the tax base of this proposal. We have to go around and see what, what they're going to do first. That's why we need to maybe postpone this till later on. People out there, make no mistake, there is people using marijuana in this here community right now. There might be a few of them watching this program as we speak, using it right now. Akin this to people making home, home brew in this city right now, there are people making their own home brew without a license. That's what they can do. Same way with people growing marijuana as we speak. If you guys want to ban it, it's going to be just like the Sky Lantern ordinance. You can go outside the city and buy a Sky Lantern, but you, and you can use it inside the city. It's, the marijuana problem, it's not a problem if you don't use it, or even if you use it, it might not be a problem, but we just have to face reality. Too many people are using it, and they are going to use it. I want to take a line from Mayor Taylor. I don't see how the government can tell a business what to do, especially after we put in a, where it is, saying where they can be at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. I'll take you, sir, in the back. Yep, you in the standing up.
Council members, Gina Vitale, just want to make a couple comments on why it would be necessary to kind of control some of this, is because when we were kids, this is a long time ago, and whatever the parents got, we got. Kids get what the parents get. Little by little, look how many kids are smoking right now in school. They get cigarettes, easy to hide. You get marijuana, it's easy to hide. It's not like a bottle of whiskey, a bottle of beer. You got, you clink, clink, you got these things, you can hide them very easily. Do we want our children, really, to get this down to their level? I mean, do we really want to do that? Kids are there to learn. You know they're going to experiment all this kind of stuff, and if we get this there, what's the next thing that they're going to get, because everybody wants to recreate on it? It's our children. Remember, there's a, an adage that goes that some people should be held accountable for contributing to the delinquency of minors. Some of these lawmakers have to be careful about that, because if you liberalize these laws too much, what kind of society you going to have? Everybody's going to be high. How are you going to do anything? Who's going to listen? We're trying to get our children... We're trying to get our children responsible, awake, aware, to help for the future. Is this going to do that? Is this, because we're thinking, oh, we're adults, we can have it. We're talking about the children that are going to get this. Think about it. How far down is it going to go? Do you really want to do that? I think you should consider that. Think of the kids, think of the future, don't think about the adults. I mean, we've got enough problems with alcohol and dope and hard narcotics, which comes from the soft narcotics like marijuana. So please, I'd urge you guys, think of the future, think of the kids. All right? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vitale. I'll take you, sir.
Mayor Taylor and the council, my name's Paul. I just wanted to simply say that I am against allowing marijuana to be sold within our city limits, and I just thought I'd tell you that personally. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Who'd like to be next?
My name is Heather Gulu, and I live in Sterling Heights. I'd like to point out that most people don't know what a marijuana establishment even looks like. They can be an unmarked building with an address. It's not going to be like a nightclub if they did exist here. Also, any kind of testing facility, they would just look like any other warehouse. You wouldn't even notice they were there. So the majority of the citizens would not even know they existed. And anyone who's not purchasing it in Sterling Heights is leaving Sterling Heights and going nearby, driving further, and just bringing it home with them. So it's not going to actually stop anyone from using, it's just preventing us from having the benefits of that. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Who'd like to be next?
Good evening, everyone. I'm not really a speaker like my son, but I just want to let everybody know here that I've heard everybody's stories and I respect them, but people, if they want to get it, they're going to get it. Children are going to get it. People are going to drive using it. It's not going to be in Sterling Heights, they're going to go elsewhere to get it. The reason we're here tonight is to vote on, as far as I'm concerned, fiscal responsibility. Are we going to allow Sterling Heights to get money from this or not? It's not, the police and fire are, it's going to be the same. You're going to still have to police the people who are driving the streets. It's fiscal responsibility is what we're talking about here tonight because everybody is still going to get it. The kids are going to get it, the addicts are going to get it, the people driving it are going to get it, just not in Sterling Heights. So we have a fiscal responsibility to have a share in that money.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening. Paul Smith, I've been a property owner, resident, citizen, voter, and taxpayer here for 41 years. As I guess everybody knows or should know, it takes, it only takes two or three weeks to pass an ordinance. And I guess if this ordinance is passed permanently, it'll only take two or three weeks to set it aside. So there's nothing really all that permanent about a permanent ordinance. Typically, at these meetings, somebody comes up with a good idea, passes four to three, and got to thank the ladies on council for giving us adult supervision and doing the right thing. Unfortunately, all too often, somehow in the interval between the meetings, through bargaining, threatening, promises of bribes or intimidation or something, somehow the dark side buys a vote. And I hope that, hope that doesn't happen this time because what we have here is a one-way street. As long as we don't have drug dealing in Sterling Heights, we don't have drug dealing. But if we open one drug shop, they'll have their feet in, they'll be entrenched, and we'll never get, never get rid of it then. So we can say no forever. It's like, well, put this way, it's a one-way street, and I'm sure the dark side don't want to delay this and slow walk it, drag their feet, do anything they can to get one marijuana shop open so we'll be in, in forever. The Hotel California by the Eagles is a metaphor for drug addiction. Welcome to the Hotel California. There's plenty of room at the Hotel California. You can check in anytime you want, but you can never leave. They stabbed it with their steely knives, but they could not kill the beast. So the only way to do it is don't ever let the beast in to begin with. The prohibition of alcohol ended with the 21st Amendment, but they didn't just legalize alcohol, they decriminalized it, and they reaffirmed the right of states, counties, cities, local governments to ban alcohol, just like we have the right to ban marijuana in Sterling Heights. And that's what we have a right to do and what we should do, and that's what we are doing. Every one of these legalized crime schemes has always had the promise of lavish revenue sharing that's going to solve all our problems with revenue sharing. The state Lotto, a three-digit Lotto that's turned into every conceivable gambling game, fireworks, 50% increase in sales tax, that was going to solve all our problems with revenue sharing. Mr. Vanderpoel seems to think we don't get any of that. Casino gambling, suburban charity gambling, Sunday morning liquor sales, hookah lounges, all this stuff, yeah, it's kind of bad, but it'll solve all our problems, but the money never comes, and it won't come here either. We vacation out in Colorado, they don't just passively make marijuana available, they got big signs, they got neon signs, they got full-page glossy ads, just like alcohol and tobacco, beautiful people enjoying marijuana. It's not going to be a passive sale, it's going to be a hard sell. I guess if we can get a little bit in from Merle Haggard, Oki from Muskogee. You know, Muskogee's analogy for a kind of a straight, white, conservative city that's a hayseed town that people laugh at. Well, we don't have no billboards in our city like the big towns south of 14 miles do, and we don't sell marijuana in our city like those hippies out in Clinton Township do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Matthew Smith. I've been a resident here in Sterling Heights now for three years. And the, I want to say first of all that I respect not only my fellow residents' point of view, but that of the council in trying to keep the city safe as possible. The sheer ignorance that I see in this room from some of you is just absolutely appalling. You're allowing fear to sit there and rule over your judgment. We heard at least one speaker say that they had seen death as a result of marijuana use. Now, I'm a scientist, I read scientific peer-reviewed literature for a living. I have never seen one single paper that has even established a legal dose for, legal dose that would result in death from marijuana. And additionally, the sheer fact that everybody seems to be referring to people who use as addicts, drug users, and just quite frankly, bad people, just misses the mark for me. Everybody that I know that uses, and for the record, I don't use, I don't enjoy it. But those that I do know that use, quite frankly, are productive members of society. They're scientists. I know several PhD chemists that use regularly for medicinal purposes. I also know lawyers, accountants, and other members of society that quite frankly, you're probably living right next to them and you don't even know it. And it, it just seems to me that quite honestly, the fact that we're passing this has nothing to do with us trying to regulate it and make sure that it doesn't establish in the city other than the fact that people are fearful of it for absolutely no good reason, and they haven't educated themselves. Anyways, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Moira Smith, Sterling Heights, Michigan. I would like to thank our gracious ladies on the council for voting the way they did at the last meeting. We need people to stand up for what is right in our society. I would disagree with many of the people that came up to speak tonight. All I can say is they're echoing the message of the devil. They're saying, come on, you're afraid, you can just join in.
All right. Please, let Mrs. Smith speak. We're not going to have any outbursts.
Just join in with us, and you'll just go down that slippery slope. I had some other statements prepared, but I've had a lot of food for thought listening to all the speakers tonight who have the right to say whatever they want, even if they disagree with me. I see a lot of incongruency with promoting marijuana sales in our city and the image that you're trying to project as a family-friendly city. This is a very family-unfriendly pastime. I worked for the state of Michigan as a disability examiner for over 35 years, and the major causes of disability, or went along with people's disability, was substance abuse. And that includes marijuana. It's a very tragic thing that's been going on in our society. We've just been deteriorating, and this is part of the deterioration, and I think we need to stop it. The big thing for me, and I agree with this for many of the people that spoke, about our children, how is this going to impact us? Their brain development is affected by the use of this drug, and that will never be repaired. Anybody that has children or grandchildren should be aware of this and keep this plague on our society away from our children. Legality does not mean that it's right or moral. Our children used, as kids, we all probably stole cigarettes and booze from our parents' dressers, but this will be readily available and easily put in people's pockets, kids' pockets, to steal marijuana cigarettes. The treats that are available in Colorado are decorated, so they're very attractive to children. There was just a story on the national news this week that there were some treats, some gummies, taken, and they had the marijuana in them. And this kid came to school and he sold it to six kids who had to be hospitalized. So you, there are overd, there is overdosing on this drug. There's a wave of crime in Colorado. Just in the city that I'm familiar with, there's been some major crimes, murder, robbery. These marijuana shops are not, they are cash businesses. And they don't go to the bank, and it's well-known that there's, that you, if you have a gun and you, you need some money, you can go to the marijuana shop and rob them for the cash. There's not going to be a real revenue increase in this, it's just going to be sales tax from one thing going to another. The governor of Colorado himself regrets that marijuana was legalized in his state. We're always concerned about appearances in our city, too, and I think that's also another incongruency that I've, that I'm seeing before me. We're now proposing to add marijuana shops to the hookah lounges, tattoo parlors, pawn shops, and other kinds of desirable, and I'm saying that with tongue-in-cheek, desirable businesses we have in our city. We definitely are slouching towards Gamora. I want us to support families in our city and children by prohibiting this newest wave of drug pushers to invade our state. Just because something is legal, it does not make it right. I'm asking you to put the brakes on this latest onslaught on our values, our health, our hard work, and our godliness.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else on this item? If not, I'll close that portion. And council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending the city code to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Yes. First of all, I'm going to start with, I know what passed in the last election. On November 6th, I know that it became legal to use marijuana, grow it for your personal use. I understand that, and it's not my job here tonight to tell you whether you should or shouldn't use it, should or shouldn't grow it. I've heard people say that I'm not, or that we aren't acting in the, in the will of the people because this passed. But you also, if you look at the ordinance, it says in there that municipalities, you voted, you voted and said that it's okay for municipalities to ban or restrict these establishments in the city. So that passed, so it isn't just one side, the other side passed. I learned in 2001, when I was sitting out in that audience, from another council member that said that people that don't vote don't have a voice. I learned that on that, on that particular incident, that I am here to not represent just the people that voted yes on this issue, not the people that voted no on this issue, not, I mean, or I should say, I'm here not just to vote, to represent them, I'm not just here to represent the people that didn't vote at all, or those that were too young to vote. I am here to represent everybody. I'm here to make sure that I keep this while I'm sitting in this seat, because the city was here before me, it's going to be here after me. My job is while I'm sitting here to make sure that this stays the safest city in the state, in the state, and it continues to stay that way, that we are fiscally responsible, we act in the best interest of all residents. I am not going to go against the administration, the city attorney, Michigan Municipal League, the police chief, the fire chief, and act on my own and say that I'm going against, go against the advice that they've given us to put this in place to protect ourselves right now. I'm, I'm not saying that this is never coming back, so I don't want people sitting out in the audience saying, once this happens, that somebody's not going to bring this back to make changes. I don't want you to think that. I want updates periodically as to what changes are being made at the state level. I want updates as far as how the municipal, Michigan Municipal League is taking action on this. I mean, we pay them to represent us and to act in our best interest, and if we're paying them to do this job, I want to find out what their recommendations are going to be in the future. So I don't, you know, this is how I feel. It doesn't mean that I'm going to judge people that use it or don't use it. It's not my job, and that's not what I'm here to do tonight. But I, what I am going to do is, there were three gentlemen today that spoke from experience, Mr. Johns, Mr. Vitale, and Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, you were very eloquent tonight with some of the songs that you brought up, and you know, he was correct. And when I agree with you, I have to agree with you because you certainly know, there's a lot of times I disagree with you. But they all brought up the fact that when they were younger, what happened with the use of marijuana in that particular age. People have been using it for as far back as I can remember. I mean, but, and now that it's legal, there's going to be more people using it. And the part of it that concerns me is the kids that are going to experiment with this because just as we have kids that, there's underage drinking, there's going to be underage use of this, of marijuana. It's going to happen. And I mean, I talked to residents now that tell me that they have children and they when they send their children to parties, the kids come back and say, yes, it is at these parties, you know, people are using it. So you know, up until now, it was illegal, so they were getting it illegally, but it was still there. You know, I, I think the biggest thing here is that we have to remember that we are all supposed to be respecting each other's ideas, or, you know, I just came from a trip where there were 5,000 people from 55 different countries and more religions than I could count. But everybody was there for the same reason, and that was to have a good time. And I really think that's what we have to think about here, is that we are all different, we come from different religions, different backgrounds, but we're all here to make sure that the city of Sterling Heights stays a safe place for all of us. You know, so that's why today, I think that we need to wait until the state actually acts on this and decides what they're going to do. acts on this and decides what they're going to do. Because right now, the state legislature is already, because with, I forget what the supermajority is, can overturn the amount of tax revenue you're going to get from this. Because I think it started out at 10% or 15%, and they're talking it down to 3%. So if, to me, if, you know, if it wasn't money grab then, and you weren't going to make money on it at 15, you certainly aren't going to make any money on it at 3. So somebody proved to me that this is going to work. For those of you that say that we're not going to have to hire more police to monitor this, after talking to the police chief, that's not the case. So for tonight, I am saying that we need to take the precaution to opt out of this, of having establishments in the city until we actually find out what we are doing and what the state is doing. And it's not going to happen overnight. But it still doesn't, even though you're waiting for an establishment, it doesn't mean that you can't use it, and you can't buy it somewhere else, and you can't grow it. That's it for right now. I might have more later.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I am very comfortable with the ordinance as it's written tonight. As Mr. Inks brought up, right in the will of the people, gave us this option to have this ordinance in place. I think that it would be irresponsible of us to put anything in place pertaining to something we know nothing about. The state hasn't even started, and they've already made changes. The law isn't even legal until Thursday, and by no way, shape, or form, I don't, I'm not, and I don't believe anyone on this council is saying, "Come Thursday, none of you are allowed to smoke marijuana in the city of Sterling Heights," because that is not true. And we can't stop you from doing that. What we're trying to protect our residents and our businesses, because there are businesses that are adjacent to potential dispensaries that have concerns as well, that have reached out to me, and I'm not sure if other members of council are not. But they're concerned about their businesses and the effects that these establishments will have on them. So we need to find out what rules the state puts into place, and then we need to proceed cautiously. I'm not saying that it's never coming back. I can't say that. I may not be here when this gets done. I may be here, I may not be here. That's the will of people as well. But, you know, the medical marijuana took quite a long time for them to figure that one out, and it still really needs to be tweaked some more. So why would we want to put things into place or allow establishments to apply for license when we don't even know what's behind it? So, you know, as far as being fiscally responsible, the tax revenue, you know, this is not a cash grab for any municipality whatsoever. I don't believe, and now with the legislature today wanting to reduce the tax from 12% to 3%, it's even less of a cash grab. I would love to see figures of, you know, enforcement versus how much the city's really going to get in this. I don't think that it's going to be this big money grab that everybody thinks that if we don't take it, that we're putting the city at risk in the general fund. I don't think that's the case at all. As far as telling a business what or whatnot they can do or sell, this type of establishment needs a state license. So yes, the state is telling them what or whatnot they can sell. And there's nothing in place. There's nothing in place. So I am totally comfortable with this. I spoke at length at the last meeting, and I really, with the exception of maybe through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel or Mr. Kachubski, I'm not sure which one would feel they could comment on this big tax revenue that residents seem to think that we're going to be missing out on if we opt out of this. Either one of you have any comment on that?
Who'd like to have it? Mr. Kachubski?
So there is a fund that is being created out of the 10% excise tax that's going to be created as part of the law. Of that 10%, 15% will be going to municipalities that have a marijuana facility in place. That 15% at the moment is estimated by 2019 to 2020 to be around $11 million to be split amongst municipalities. Assuming conservatively, about 500 or so would be open by that time, over the course of those few years, you'd be looking at around $20,000 per establishment. So it's not a huge amount of money when you compare it to the enforcement that would likely be put in place for each particular unit. So depending, if you have more units, you get more revenue, obviously. The state is anticipating by full implementation, cities and municipalities will be getting somewhere around $19 million of revenue out of that fund at their 15%, which actually you could expect to decrease because you'll have more units at that point, lower pricing. Therefore, the fiscal analysis has been, you'll probably see less.
Okay. And as far as underage access, it's my personal belief that the voters of the state of Michigan have now put the children in the position of getting access, and that's more through the home grows than through an establishment that we're speaking about tonight. I'm not sure, you know, the kids didn't vote it in, but boy, I bet they're sure going to try things out. And I think that's a huge, huge issue that is a whole other discussion. So with that being said, I have nothing further at this point, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
You know, leadership is taking a stand, you know, and trying to decide an issue for the residents. We got elected to make the hard decisions. If decisions were easy, we wouldn't need us up here. The city could run on autopilot. I take this decision as being a very hard decision, because, you know, there's a lot of thought that goes to it. I get letters from both people who are opposed and people who are in favor. But what we're talking about is an industry and businesses in our city and future tax revenue, not just the excise tax, but business taxes, sales tax that gets returned to us through revenue sharing. And we're not just talking about dispensaries, which I think people so often pair this to, you know, pot shops, head shops, whatever you want to call them. We're talking about testing facilities, transport facilities, grow facilities, things like that. Other cities are already opening the door to these industries: Hazel Park, East Point, I'm sure Detroit will opt in, Warren. So we're turning down a future tax base, a future industry here, based upon fear of the unknown, fear of boogeyman. You know, I don't use marijuana. I think it's silly. I don't smoke cigarettes for the very same reason. But it's going to be legal now. And, you know, when we mischaracterize what the police and the fire chief said here, I get very frustrated. They both said that they're very afraid of the home grows, which are now legal, and in numbers that are larger than anywhere else in the country. And I think that having a safe, legal place in the city to buy marijuana that's tested and taken care of will help prevent those home grows, which are plaguing our community, which are causing fires, which are causing explosions, which are abusing our residents. I think that that would be a better option. Now, all this talk about the state amending this law, it's not going to happen. The state needs 75% of the legislature, 75% to amend this law that was just passed overwhelmingly. You know, so it's not going to be amended in this term. The law needs to be amended. Don't get me wrong. There are real problems, especially with the number of plants in the homes, other things. It needs to be amended. But I doubt that they get to that point at this point. So I think Sterling Heights should lead. You know, again, we're not having a public policy discussion about favorability or unfavorability. We're talking about a substance that's not legal. Now, we can make the same argument, we should ban liquor stores in Sterling Heights. We should ban, you know, stores that sell pornography, for example. We should ban stores that sell cigarettes in Sterling Heights. You have to be 21 years old to buy or use this substance. We're not talking about that. We're treating this as something different, and it's going to be kind of a new age we're moving into. And I can respect that it's going to take some time for people to get used to this idea. But at the same time, the people voted, both in Sterling Heights and across our state, to legalize it. And I think leadership says that we have to follow the will of the people and not the will of, I guess, the side that lost, because it was an argument, and that side lost. You know, I'm also confused about how are we going to need more law enforcement officers to deal with marijuana now that it's legal, now that it's legal rather than when it's illegal? How do we need more cops to police it when it's legal than when it's illegal? That doesn't make, I'm all in favor of more police in Sterling Heights, don't get me wrong. But the idea that somehow we need more to regulate it than we did when it was illegal, that strikes me as a fallacy that's just kind of asking for the bubble to be popped on it. You know, I think that this is ill-considered and ill-timed and just wrong. And instead of preventing the home grows in the city, it's going to increase them. And it's going to just kind of push into a wrong direction. I'm still no on this. I think the city should lead by establishing standards that hopefully the state will adopt, because we're not going to allow these billboards and this advertising and these other things, because we want our city to be safe and secure and clean like we always have been. But I just, I think that it's a shame that so much fear, rather than just pure logic, has really carried the day here. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
I'll go next. Thank you. We have legal counsel, we have a city attorney, and it's his job to review legislation and make sure that we are advised correctly so that we can make our decisions to protect the residents of Sterling Heights. It's been recommended to us to opt out at this point, because legislation is not complete in that the state has not decided what the rules, the regulations are going to be in regard to this recreational marijuana. My concern is, if we don't opt out now, what happens if someone buys property? Let's say that they decide to buy a portion of Lakeside Mall, and they start to make their changes. What they really want to do is set up an operation there, a little community, where they can have condominiums, maybe around the outside, maybe little grow operations on the center, maybe a processing center, have their own little marijuana town with residents that like to have their recreational marijuana all around the outside. So they buy this property with this intent, and then they make application, and they're told, "Well, you can't do it just yet because the rules aren't in place." And then they decide, "Well, once the rules are in place..." But I'm grandfathered, because I had this investment here. I've already started to redesign Lakeside Mall for my new community. What would happen? Can we fight this? Or would they be grandfathered? Could they move forward with their operation? That's probably really far-fetched and could never happen. But these are the things that could take place. What if it's somebody that's going to buy property right next door to you, or across the street from you, or down by the school? Maybe they're going to be 500 feet, or maybe 1,000 feet from the school, but you want your kids walking by this shop selling marijuana? I wouldn't. Because yes, when you're a teenager, you swipe the cigarettes. Yes, you swipe daddy's homemade Italian wine. Your children, you try, you experiment, but you don't know what you're doing to yourself at that point. So I guess maybe I'm just well-experienced, that I want to say, "I don't want to give the children of Sterling Heights the opportunity to be exposed to that." So until the state is ready with their rules and regulations, so that the city of Sterling Heights knows how to set up their ordinance, I want to opt out. I probably will not be here when this comes back to the table, but I can guarantee you, if I am, I'm still going to vote no. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Koski. Anyone else? Mayor Protem Sarowski?
Okay. Well, leadership is taking a stand. And I have no personal stake in the game. I have friends and family who smoke pot, and I don't have a problem with what they're doing medical at this point. But this is not about personal preference. This isn't about what I want. I'm not trying to demonize, I don't demonize the ordinance. There's the state law that was voted through, changes that. It is now legal in the state of Michigan. We don't know what the country will do, but it's now legal in the state of Michigan. That does, that means that I have no way to change that. But what we do have, things to change and to protect our city with our ordinances. It is legal to have guns. It is legal to carry weapons. It is not legal, however, to shoot them in the city of Sterling Heights. You can't go shoot the deer in your neighbor's backyard that looks really lovely and yummy, or the bunnies, thank you, they're so cute. But there's a reason for that, and that is for the safety of the public. That is for the safety and the practicality of the public. We had coyotes in my backyard two nights ago. I still can't shoot them. Had to take my big chicken dog out there, and he didn't do anything either. He didn't even bark at them. But my point is that at this juncture, we have nothing to go on from the state. It is in our duty to protect all residents, black, white, green, yellow, orange, Republican, Democrat, Green Party. Just because the Republicans won the presidential election doesn't mean I only have to side with the Republican side. It is not a win or lose specifically. It is still about who, that we still have to represent, as Mrs. Zarco said, the residents of the city. So I am in favor of this ordinance as it stands right now. We have no other guidance to go by. There are such things, grandfathering buildings and businesses in. We do not want to take that risk at this point. It is in the best interest of the citizens, all citizens, everybody who voted yes or no. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. Any, Mr. Shannon, anything?
Well, can we just call a question?
No, you can't.
I think he wants to, Mayor Taylor wants to speak.
The answer is no, Nate.
Yes. You really think that Mike doesn't want to talk?
He does get an opportunity to speak if he wants to.
Well, I mean, we already know where the votes are at. Let's just get on with it.
No. I don't appreciate that, Nate. I seriously don't. I don't know why you would suggest that. So I'm going to speak if you're not interested in it.
Okay. As for me, I do have some things to say, because we are deliberating here, and the point of the deliberation is to try to express to each other how we feel and maybe change somebody's mind. So the, a few things I want to say. First, I want to say why I'm not voting no. I'm not voting no, because what we hear is that the voters spoke, and that the voters said that you need to pass this, you need to allow recreational marijuana, because the city of Sterling Heights voted in favor of recreational marijuana. While that's true, as it was pointed out several times, it's much more complicated than that. Saying that the people voted in favor of proposal one is quite a different thing than saying people voted in support of establishing marijuana facilities in Sterling Heights. So that's not why I'm voting this way tonight. I'm also not voting this way because I want to protect tax revenue for the city of Sterling Heights. I don't think this is going to have any real serious impact on tax revenue here. The other thing I'd like to say on that is, while there is a proposal in Lansing right now in the lame duck session to change this proposal, I don't anticipate that that's going to happen. So I'm not voting the way I'm voting because of those reasons. Another thing I want to point out is that a lot of people who are urging us to adopt this ordinance prohibiting marijuana establishments in Sterling Heights brought up some various... this ordinance prohibiting marijuana establishments in Sterling Heights brought up some very good reasons to vote no against proposal one, but not necessarily good reasons to ban marijuana establishments now that proposal one has passed. We saw charts from Ms. Early that there's higher use among kids in the states that have passed marijuana, recreational marijuana laws. We heard from people that said we're trying to project a family-friendly image and how does that, how does that comport with what we're trying to do here? It's not good for children. We heard that we would need more police officers to enforce this, which I, as Mr. Radke said, I categorically deny that as being true. This is a legal product. Now, you need fewer police officers to enforce it. All drugs are banned. We've heard, this is not going to be a passive regulation like Mr. Smith said, that there's going to be signs and there's going to be aggressive campaigns to get people to buy this product. I don't disagree with that. We heard that it's going to create more crime. I don't necessarily agree with that. But maybe there's an argument to be made on both sides that driving is going to become more dangerous if this passes and that there are problems with grow operations. All of these are valid reasons for you to vote against recreational marijuana if you don't believe that the state should be legalizing it. But that's passed and that is over. So now we have to deal with the reality that marijuana is going to be available for sale. So some of the same people who came up here and said, you know, driving is going to be dangerous, people who are going to be driving with marijuana in their system, it's going to cause a danger to our residents, it's not going to be good for the community. Well, if you, we all, they also recognize that people can leave the city to go get it. So they say, why should they be allowed to get it here? Make them go to Warren or make them go to Clinton Township. Well, that just increases the amount of traffic of the people who are going to buy marijuana. The same thing with grow operations. Well, they can grow it in their house. Well, we're trying to dissuade people from growing it in their houses. And turning residential properties into marijuana factories has been a major nuisance in our neighborhoods. We have hundreds of those grow operations. And the chief came here and testified that that is what the big problem is. He didn't really say, the only thing I heard him say with regard to medical, or with regard to recreational marijuana establishments is that when you have marijuana in your system and you're driving, it's hard to detect. Well, that's true whether somebody buys it from a establishment, a commercial establishment, or grows it in their own home. What he talked about is if we wanted to really enforce the law, and we can enforce the laws. You can only have 12 plants for medical marijuana caregivers. They can have, I think, 72 plants. So we can enforce the laws that if you have more marijuana plants than you're allowed to have, we can get in those houses. But it requires a warrant and it requires a lot of police and detective work. So why, I don't understand why we would do anything here that would encourage people to grow the marijuana in their house rather than get it legally, safely, and somewhere close to their house. So that, I don't understand. Again, all good reasons to vote no, but now that it's passed, we have to think of it differently. The main reason that we've been told by the administration and city attorney that we need to act now and we need to be reactionary on this is because this idea that there aren't any state rules promulgated yet and we don't know yet what we are going to be able to do. Now, I am going to very respectfully disagree with the city attorney and the city administration on this. And I'm going to give my reasons why and I'm going to let you make up your mind, counsel. But look at the text of the Marijuana Act that just passed. In 6.1, it says, we can limit, as a municipality, we can limit the type of license we give, we can limit the number of licenses we give. So we don't need any state rules to tell us about how many establishments we can allow or whether we would allow them at all. 6.2A says we can put reasonable restrictions on signs. What is a reasonable restriction? Whether we decide what the reasonable restriction is, the state of Michigan decides what a reasonable restriction is? That is something that could be subject to litigation. It has to be reasonable, either way. We shouldn't wait to see what the state says. And in fact, the state may not say anything about signs. When the state promulgates rules, they're not going to, they're more than likely not going to say a sign is reasonable if it is X square feet in size, if it is of these colors or of this design. No, they're, the statute, the act already says what it says, and they're almost certainly going to leave that. They're going to say that 6.2B in the act says, we can regulate the time, place, and manner for where these marijuana facilities are going to be located. It has to be reasonable and not unreasonably impracticable. But the time means we can limit the hours. The place means we can zone for it accordingly. The manner means that we can determine whether there's going to be standalone building, whether it's going to be allowed in a shopping center, whether it's going to be allowed in, you know, certain areas of the, certain commercial areas of the city or not. So we're allowed to designate time, place, and manner restrictions. 6.2C, designated areas. 6.2D, we're able to designate penalties for violating. So these are things that are already included in the act. There's more. 9.13, which is what Mr. McGregor brought up. Now, I think you've got it a little bit wrong, Mr. McGregor. This is not saying, so 9.13C says that if some, if a city doesn't opt out and if the applicant for a license comes in front of the state, the state cannot deny the application if it's, if the property where the proposed marijuana establishment is to be located is not within an area zone exclusively for residential use and is not within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergartens or of any grades, 1 through 12 unless, unless a municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces this distance requirement. So what this is saying is that the state must approve a license if the, if it doesn't violate those terms that they are being provided. We can, of course, opt out. But what's very, what's very interesting about this statement is says, quote, unless a municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces this distance requirement. So that's a clear signal, the voters passed this, this is the law, and it says, we can as a municipality pass an ordinance that says you cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school or church or residential. Or we could reduce it, 500 feet, 250 feet, whatever is reasonable. And we know, because we have decades and decades of planning and zoning experience as a city, what is a reasonable restriction. So to say that there aren't rules promulgated already is a fallacy. The rules that we need to know in order to make a policy decision here on whether marijuana establishments should be located in Sterling Heights are plain as day, they're included in the act, and they're there for us to follow. Mrs. Kosky, you talked about what happens if somebody gets some property at Lakeside and decides to open up Marijuana Village at Lakeside. Then you even said this is far-fetched and would never happen. And I agree. It would have never happened. And then you say, well, what if they're 500 or less than 1,000 feet from schools? Well, we have the ability to create an ordinance right now that limits them, that we determine where they're going to be. I want to, two more things before I close. We're talking about up here opting out as a, as a protective measure to wait for the state's rules and regulations. What we're not talking about is what rules and regulations are we waiting for? We already know we can regulate time, place, manner. We know we can regulate hours. We can regulate zoning. We can regulate how close you are to a school. What we're talking about with the state's rules and regulations, we can get guidance from looking at the rules and regulations promulgated under the MMFLA, which is the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. When you look at the rules and regulations promulgated under that, what are we talking about? Well, that, those rules that the department came up with are things like, what does legal name mean? Well, if you're applying, you need to use your legal name. Legal name means the qualifying patient or primary caregiver's name as it appears on a valid, lawfully obtained Michigan driver's license issued under the Michigan Vehicle Code 1949 PA 300 MCL 257 dot 1 to 257. This is what we're talking about. What does parent or legal guardian mean? What needs to be included in an application? Well, you need your address. You need your proof of residency. You need a copy of your state-issued driver's license. You need to also provide a written certification to the state of Michigan. What is a written certification? Well, if you look in the rules, it tells you. None of that stuff is going to be helpful in developing the policy that we create up here. It's all going to be stuff that the state licensing department uses to determine whether an application is valid or not, whether it complies with their rules, whether there are the safeguards in place so that they know that this person is who the person says they are. Whether they know that the person applying for a license has the financial wherewithal and hasn't been convicted of a felony before. So that's the sort of thing that is going to be promulgated by the rules, or those are the sorts of rules that are going to be promulgated. I think we have all the information we need right now to make a policy decision. And any delay in the policy decision, to me, I think there's good reason to delay it. We can take time, study it, come up with what I think is, what we think would be a good ordinance. But to say, well, we're not going to make any substantive decision on recreational marijuana because procedurally, we're just, we don't have the information that we need, I think is a bit of a cop-out. And I think, as I said before, it's playing both sides of the fence. We have all the information we can make now. And if the council up here says, look, we just don't want it because we don't want it, I can respect that. And I'm happy to have that discussion. But I think we should have it and we should, we should talk about substantively what we want and let the community weigh in on that rather than couch this as a procedural reason to say no. So those are my, those are my thoughts. And I don't have anything further. If there's anybody that wants to make a brief follow-up, I'd be happy to.
Mayor Taylor?
Go ahead, Mrs. Zarko.
Briefly, two things. First of all, I'm not going to agree with you that we couldn't put all that in place right now. I mean, I'm not going to disagree with you. We could. And you know what? The state's going to come up with something and change that completely and they supersede what we do. So we'd have people that have already started doing, maybe having a facility, a grow operation, a transport operation, a dispensary. We could have all that and they'll be grandfathered in because the state has superseded all of the restrictions that we've put in place. Number one. The other thing is we keep talking about the cost of enforcement. The cost of enforcement isn't about the person that's using the marijuana. The cost of enforcement is monitoring the facilities that would be in the city after they're built. So that's what the difference in the cost of enforcement is. And nothing further.
Anyone else with a brief follow-up? Okay. Final thing I forgot to mention. The act specifically provides that if we opt out up here at council, that with just 5% of the number of voters who voted in the last gubernatorial election, the residents of Sterling Heights can create their own ordinance with their own regulations, with their own number of facilities that they want. 5% of the number of people who voted, it was about 50,000 people who voted in the last gubernatorial election in Sterling Heights. So 5% is to, I think, about 2,500 people. This council obtained 7,500 petition signatures by the seven of us alone last year. A motivated, two or three highly motivated people could obtain those 2,500 signatures and do that without a whole lot of effort. And next thing you know, you've got 25 medical or 25 recreational establishments, or 50, or whatever they dream up. So to me, I think that the better protective measure would be to not opt out. Or if we opt out today, that's fine. I've given my reasons why I don't think we should. But we must be mindful that that is very likely to come down the pike. And if we truly want to be protective, then this council needs to create a good restrictive ordinance that limits the number of these facilities, puts them only in places where we can be very sure that they're going to be, the residents are going to be protected, they're going to be safe, they're going to be well-lit, they're not going to be open all hours of the night. If we leave it to the residents to write the ordinance for us, we might very, we might not very much like what we're left with. So with that, Mrs. Risc, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Mrs. Sirovsky?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Zarko?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries four to three. We will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is our consent agenda, just in time. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on our consent agenda? Mr. Smith?
Well, this is something of a softball item by my usual standards. But I noticed one, one item on the consent agenda kind of got my attention. It only involves $11,000, which, you know, is probably not even equal to the police overtime for the weekly farmer's market. And not only that, it's donated money that the police were able to obtain from a car dealer, so it's not budget money anyway. But, so the story goes over at this four-acre dog park that they have to exercise the three police dogs at, that they had an old construction trailer that they're using to store their police dog paraphernalia. And they decide it's inadequate and they got the $11,000 donated and they're going to buy a shed from Home Depot and put up this $11,000 shed to store the police dog paraphernalia. Well, I don't have anything at this Home Depot. I shop there about five times a week myself and I put up one of those sheds in my backyard myself. But driving by that area, see Warren CPC where they have the shop class? And these kids in shop class, they make sheds and little barns and gazebos as shop class projects and they put them out in the parking lot and try to sell them to people that drive by. And my, I think the kids in the shop class at Warren CPC for $11,000 can build a shed that's three times bigger and better than what Home Depot gives. And it'd be a nice experience and a thing for community involvement for Warren CPC to at least, at least give them an offer to them. So we'll, we'll give you the $11,000 for materials, paint and that, and student labor. I think we can, we can do a better job than what you get for Home Depot. Like I say, it's a softball item. There's no real money since it's donated, but I think it could be spent better in a more positive way. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mrs. Jamar.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider an appointment to a City of Sterling Heights Board. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, this is a, one vacancy on the Board of Review. John Fenn was nominated at the last city council meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make the motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolve to appoint John Fenn to the Board of Review for a term ending June 30th, 2020. To get to the appointee meeting, the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I have none.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Cavalli?
A little bit more even-mannered than the last time I was up here. But I just want to say that this was actually my first experience with Sterling Christmas. I volunteered this year as a member of the Historical Commission. And it was honestly, it was amazing. It was great to see the faces of our residents out there having a great time. And everybody who came into the Upton House was absolutely wowed by some of the things that we had there, including our organ player. So I just wanted to thank you guys for making that possible for us. And of course, as a commissioner, thank you for allowing us to have a budget and helping us out with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalli. Anyone else under Communications? Mr. Smith?
Just a couple items. One, I actually did take a look at that budget package that was posted online, and one thing I noticed in there, I think it was page, maybe page 135, I might guess wrong, but I see five years ago, our tax base was four and a half billion. Now we're up to five and a half billion. It's close, almost a 20% increase in tax base and tax revenue. And I noticed that when the, when the park tax passed, it was one mil for 20 years with an estimated 61 billion, or 61 million we're going to take in on the park tax. Well, one mil for 20 years is 110 million, not 61 million. So with this increased income, it's quite a bonanza for the park tax, and shows that that statement on the ballot was underestimated, to be sure. And still, even as I see that the rate they're spending, you'll probably even run out of the 110 million at the rate we're going. Secondly, at the last meeting, I heard some discussion on the rather premature kind of dead man walking replacement of Mr. Shannon, as if he isn't here anymore, kind of having a prolonged lame duck session for Councilman Shannon, in which he was even voting and discussing his own replacement. I think that's very, very much improper, that we have 60 days after we have a council vacancy, we're putting, getting way ahead of ourselves, replacing a councilman who hasn't even gone, and furthermore, having him even discuss his own replacement while he's still here. I think, so I think that's wrong. Let's wait until the first meeting of December till we actually have a genuine vacancy. If we recall, when Mayor Nadi was taken ill, it was several months that we did business with six council members and didn't seem to hurt anything. So let's, let's wait till we have a vacancy before we replace him. On that point, I noticed in this last election, we've had special elections to replace members of the US Senate, House of Representatives, county clerk. We have people that are supposed to be elected by the voters, by the citizens, not by what's left of the government. I guess, an analogy, the federal government with Republicans in control, every time a Democrat dies or resigns, the Republicans would just appoint another Republican, thereby solidifying their majority, which is essentially what happens here in Sterling Heights, that whenever we have a vacancy, what's left to the council uses that vacancy to solidify and perpetuate their, their majority control. As it sits right now, it looks like four out of the seven people that are sitting up here got their positions through that very position, which really circumvents and defies the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Mr. McGregor?
I'm going to try to mention the fact that this has germane to city business, because earlier I was, I, you know, I guess as a Christian, being called the voice of the devil, I kind of consider that a personal attack on myself. So I was just kind of curious if we're going to allow people to just call, call out people as, as the voice of the devil. And I've, you know, as a Christian, I've read, I've read a lot of stories, I've read the Bible, obviously, I've read Genesis, I've read, you know, the books of the Bible, and I understand the devil not to be a very, a very, a very pleasant figure. So to be called, to be called his voice is, it's really offensive. And I guess I'm going to apologize for the outburst of laughter, but I just found that very offensive, and I don't think it was corrected. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anyone else? Mr. Jutnik, just in time. Well, maybe give him a minute to catch his breath.
Okay. I thought you were calling him. Jasmine Erlin again. First, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Shannon for winning the race. And I had to go back to the comment that Mr. McGregor said, that he felt offended for comments. Well, when you come here, you had to get a thick skin, especially after you're going to be involved in politics, somebody who has been called dangerous, where it's a false accusation about me, or being a white supremacist, where my grandmother is black, my mom is native, meets with European, so I had everything in my blood. But unfortunately, the campaign against me was that I was a white supremacist. But anyway, going back to the comment that missed, I want to say thank you for everybody who was at the Sterling, the Christmas Sterling. It was amazing. I enjoy volunteering for cert, I enjoy seeing the people around there. I couldn't escape because I was too frozen, my legs couldn't go there, but I will try sometime. I like that. And everybody was really respectful, and it was a great event. I wish everybody a early Merry Christmas. Going to the vacancy, we, it was advertised already that in November 27, it was an opening, and the deadline to apply is on December 14, and the candidate presentation will be on December 18. Appointment on January 2nd, and swearing-in in January 15. As you may expect, I'm going to be applying for that vacancy. I had been asked by residents to do it. And I had to start with apologies. I know it has been said that I don't follow the council rules. It was hard at the beginning when I started coming here, seeing residents mistreated, but I know we need to be respectful, whether we agree or not. I want to let the residents know that I will be applying for that. I will like the support from council members, because we know, even though we are applying, people are going to come and speak here, there is a need for votes to be appointed. I think that's all I had to say. Thank you for everything, and I see you are running two weeks. Have a nice week.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Early. Mr. Jutnik?
Good evening. Joe Jutnik, I had to get out my pajamas and come down here. Well, I guess I'll just start out with congratulating the four of you on the vote tonight. I agree with everybody. Everything that you said two weeks ago, 100%, I was agreeing with everybody. Of course, now I'm down here for you, Mr. Taylor. You know, when you were making your pitch of why the ordinance should go through.
We're not going to talk about the ordinance, Mr. Jutnik.
Okay, I won't talk about the ordinance. I'll talk about the cheap shot that you took at the four women council, the councilwomen. You took a cheap shot at them. You didn't call them liars, but you took a cheap shot. So I want the councilwomen to look at the tape and see if he was questioning your intelligence or integrity or what. But you took a cheap shot at the four women. Shame on you. But that's normal for you to take cheap shots at people, isn't it? With all the Facebook postings, having the news come out because you call residents assholes, and so on and so forth, being drunk in public. You made a very good point, Ms. Sarowski. You said leaders lead. All right? Mrs. Schmidt, leaders lead. You're absolutely correct. Mrs. Kosky, been on this board a long time. Leaders lead. Mrs. Arco, we disagreed sometimes, more times, but you're a leader and you lead. So I would hope that, Ms. Sarowski, that mayor pro tem, maybe you would consider running for mayor. I think you have the qualifications, you would win, and we can take Mike Taylor and send him packing. He's not fit to be the mayor of the city with the comments that he's posted over the years. And when it comes to this election, he'll probably pick Mr. Gerpe, his good buddy, you know, who hung a picture of Christians being burned alive at the stake and thought that was funny, and the other comments used to be about Mr. Jefferson and so on and so forth. So anyhow, I got a letter from the city administration about Merrill Road the day after the meeting. They're going to lay down asphalt, they're going to use like a roller, they're going to roll it out, so it's going to stay in. Well, that was two weeks ago, and you had two weeks of great weather, and Mr. Vanderpool, so it looks like you're kicking the can down the road. Did do something. I've seen surveyors all up and down Merrill Road. I think that's probably for the complete tear-out next year, if you would like to comment about that. But there's all types of ribbons and great stakes, and they probably got their benchmarks on all the sewers and things like that, so if you can comment on that. But anyhow, Ms. Sarowski, I'll support you 100% or any of the other three councilwomen. It's time for a change in the mayor of this, the direction of this city. I don't like the way Mayor Taylor's running it, and he can sit up there and blow hot air all he wants, and I'm glad that you all stuck to your vote. Have a great night. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jutnik. Ms. Elias? Sorry, I take it we're off for the steak dinner we talked about, Joe? McDonald's.
Hello again. My name is Senna, and I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that there is a vacancy that was mentioned, and I wanted to recommend someone who I think cares about this community through her volunteer efforts, belonging on the community emergency response team, volunteering at different events and on different boards. This woman has spoken up for the people who didn't have a voice, was able to generate people to work together. I think that's exactly what a good leader is, someone who stands up in front and stands up for the voice of the people. I'd like to recommend Jasmine Early to fill that vacancy, that Mr. Nate Shannon is going to be, going to state rep. Congratulations on that. She put a hotly debated, I don't know what to call it, it was hotly debated seat for that state senate, that I don't believe anybody, either Nate or others, expected. She proved that there's a lot of people who care about her, who listen to her, who believes in her, and she is a woman of integrity. He will stand for all people. She's kind and gracious, and I think, she's applied many times, your prejudices have to be laid aside. You have to pick the most qualified. She had a quite number of votes, very close to Mr. Nate Shannon. She represents the voice of the people. Those people stated they trust her. You need to put that together in a form of a, basically, appointment. She is a tremendous woman that I trust, that I know would stand for the truth, and will work together with everyone on making sure that we do best for the city. So please give her consideration, and I recommend to all the people who are watching this to please, I know most of you can't come here, but a lot of you believe in her. I need for you guys to send letters to the city council, letting them know your wishes, express your wishes directly, that you wish to support her. Jasmine Early has fought for this city. You need to fight for her. You need to make sure your voice is heard, so the council can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Elias. Anyone else under Communications? Mr. Vitale was in?
Again, I agreed with everything that was just said for Ms. Early here to be filling the vacant spot that'd be coming up, and mainly that would kind of erase a lot of elections, expressions and thoughts and miss, miss throwing the wrong stones at the innocent people. She's been accused of a lot of things during the election, which were very, very bad. I mean, filthy, bad, rotten, no good, whatever you want to call them, but they were, and they had to come from somewhere. And I would say, I would consider, I would ask the mayor to consider this to be like an act of retribution for all the nasty things that were thrown at her. She is a very quite young lady, strong, positive, family, and she's concerned about the city. All my time I've known her, she's always talking about this is coming up, that's coming up, so she's very, and she gets a lot of people involved. And so that would give a good balance to the council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bill Yurbeck, once again, mayor and council. James Early, I've known her since 2016, when we had this presidential run, and how she participated with her party in the election process, and she was always a leader, someone that you could see could bring people together, especially when here in Sterling Heights, we have a lot of diversity, and probably also her experience compared to other resumes that you'll be reviewing, and looking at that from that perspective, and also her education and her form of political affairs. So please give her encouragement, evaluation that's fair and reasonable, and I'm sure the public and the people of Sterling Heights would appreciate that, and you can see some inclusiveness, also a continued improvement, because we all need it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else under Communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, just quickly, there was an idea brought up earlier by a resident that we should look into Warren Consolidated Prep Center, building the shed for the K-9 unit. I don't think we've considered that. I think it's a good idea. Without council objection, I'd like to look into that a little further before we proceed with the commercial shed purchase from Home Depot. Thank you.
Need a motion?
No, no, no. No, mayor, I was just looking, all I need is, if anyone had any objection from that, with that idea, then we'll hold off purchasing, executing the invoice with Home Depot until we can go ahead and take a look at this option.
Okay. So with our vote today, you can just hold off on, okay, does, does anyone object to that?
Nope.
Okay. Then I think you have direction on that. Open it up, or Mr. Kaszewski, anything tonight?
Nothing.
Then I'll open it up to council for any reports or new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Just have two quick things. Sterling Christmas was a wonderful time this year, and I want to personally thank everyone who came out and volunteered. Just seeing so many people using the ice skating rink was wonderful. I was almost afraid to go on, because I'm, you know, some of these people are very good skaters, and I'm not. I'm going to get knocked over, including the mayor, zoom right by me. But I think it was a wonderful time. I'm glad everyone came and participated. I look forward to having it again next year. I also wanted to bring attention to one thing from our financial audit earlier that I thought was something that we need to really think about in the city. When it comes to property tax revenue, in the report that was prepared, it said taxable values, including personal property losses, have now fallen by 28% in Sterling Heights since 2008. Real property value alone is still nearly 20% lower than 2008, resulting in a cumulative $120.1 million loss in tax revenue growth during the same period. Taxable values in our city are not projected to reach the levels of 2008 again until 2026. Between 2008 and 2026, we're going to have zero revenue growth in taxes in the city based upon 2008 levels. You know, and then also, for 2017, the City of Sterling Heights' tax rate was 6.4 mils below the average of all cities in this county, something we should be very proud of, and something that I saw in the report that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Through the chair to our city attorney. It was brought up this evening that, as an example, myself as a resident, that I could write an ordinance, creating whatever.